This is me of the Gadsden City Council and I come to order to Chair of Colorado, Ivan Nelson, for the phone call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Councilman Williams is absent today. Councilman Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present. The meeting is open for business. Phil Swindle will lead the invocation today. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you because you're holy and just and righteous. But Lord, we thank you in this Christmas season especially because you're also merciful. And God, we thank you for sending your Son to come and live among us and in spite of seeing us for who we really were, dying for us on a cross. God, we thank you for this season that we celebrate. Thank you for this nation in which we live and for the men and women who lead it and for the men and women who protect it. God, we thank you for all the gifts that you've given us, our friends and our family. And thank you for these men. Give them the wisdom that comes only from heaven to make the decisions for this city that they need to make. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Santa Claus is coming to town.
Today we're honored to have a special presentation by Yer Brown Kindergarten. We're happy to have you here and, Kilmer, you the leader or is Leslie the leader? We're ready.
You know Dasher and Dancer and Dancer and Dixie, Comet and Cupid and Donner and Litschner, but do you recall the most famous reindeer of all? Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer had a very shiny nose, and if you ever saw it, you would even say it glows. All of the other reindeers used to laugh and call him names. They never let poor Rudolph join any reindeer games. Then one foggy Christmas Eve, Santa came to stay. Rudolph with your nose so bright, won't you come and learn to hunt? Then how the reindeer loved him, had a shout-out with clear yippee! Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, no go down in history. We wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Why did he come around the front? It's not wrong.
I believe we've got the news media from all over the world with us today and all the cameras flashing some of us.
Merry Christmas. Thank you.
I can't put it up there.
Mr. President, while we're, before they leave us, I'd like to say a little something, please. It's always, everybody always says that the Gadsden City Council knows everything that's going on before it happens and everything. I would like to say that two of my very good friends, Colton and Brody Cunias, they told me two weeks ago at church they was coming to sing for us today. I think Colton was later in his class today and Brody was yesterday in his. And I just want to let you all guys know that I really appreciate you all letting us know you all was coming so I could tell these other guys two weeks ago so they could be on their very best behavior. And we want to wish all you all Merry Christmas, guys.
And Piper, I heard you sing out real nicely, girl. Great job.
They have another meeting at 11:30 so they can't stay.
Got different engagements.
That was very nice.
That's beautiful.
You know that hoop during the decoy with this kid.
Chairman, entertain a motion to approve the minutes on the work session and the council meeting on December 13th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Oh, she does. They do.
Chairman, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of December 9th through 15th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, mayor. Unfinished business, there is an ordinance amending Code Section 3431 to revise council and district boundaries. This is a mayor's plan. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. This is a plan proposed by Mayor Guyton. If adopted, the plan would be, must be pre-cleared by the Voting Rights Section of the Civil Rights Division of the U.S. Justice Department. The revised boundaries will apply to the August 2014 election. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I'd like to ask for a 14-day table on this, please. And the reason for it is we have another plan coming forward that I think is going to be more compatible with all the districts. Ask for a 14-day table, please.
Do you want to do B the same way?
Yes, I do.
Well, why don't we go ahead and read it?
Did you get a second on that?
Yes, second.
The B is an ordinance amending city code to revise, well, this says the mayor's plan. This is proposed by Robert Avery. What is the pleasure of the council?
Ask for a table on that one also, yes. 14-day table.
Both at the same time?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
We have a motion in second to table items A and B for 14 days. Those in favor, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed? We have one no. Motion carries to table for 14 days.
Nine is a public hearing concerning 2207 Hill Avenue in District 6 has been canceled because a nuisance has been evaded by the owner, so there's nothing to do. Ten, this is a time and place as advertised to allow anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license on property located at 200 North 6th Street in District 3. Back Forty Beer Company, LLC has applied for a manufacturing license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Please come forward to the microphone. Let me, you have, let me your remarks to five minutes, please.
I just really wanted to come up here and address any questions that the council may have. My name's Jason Wilson. I'm the owner of Back Forty Beer Company. After about a year of work over there and some pretty extensive delays on the fabrication of our equipment, we've finally gotten everything in and installed. We've got some raw materials on the floor, so we're looking within the next week or so to get our first batches cranked up over there. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them, but other than that, we're excited to become a part of the business community here.
That was the question, when you going to open?
Yeah. Well, like I said, we've got a couple of minor issues with the sprinkler system in there we need to get cleared before the fire marshal gives us all clear on the occupancy, but within the next week to 10 days.
I know you all been doing quite a bit of work. I've been noticing it, so that's.
Oh, man. Well, I'm excited. We're going to try and put something together for some of the local community leaders once we get a couple of batches under our belt over there where we can come in and let you guys see the operation and see exactly how we do what we do. So be looking for that in the coming weeks.
Couple of batches under your belt or the council's belt? Which one? I missed that.
I'll let you guys decide how much of that batch is under your belt.
Robert's talking, Ben, but he doesn't even drink.
We're thrilled to have to have you in our city and just pleased in any way we can have you.
Absolutely. Thank you guys very much.
Can anyone else like to speak in favor of it?
Make a motion we approve.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license on property located at 221 South 3rd Street in District 3 in the former Dr. Feelgood's location. REC Entertainment has applied for a Class 1 lounge retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Twelve is a resolution authorizing agreement with Alabama Emergency Management Agency. This is a hazard mitigation grant for individual safe rooms in the amount of $38,653 with $24,897 being federal funds. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Twelve is a resolution authorizing agreement with Alabama Emergency Management Agency. This is a hazard mitigation grant for individual safe rooms in the amount of $38,653 with $24,897 being federal funds. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Twelve is a resolution authorizing agreement with Alabama Emergency Management Agency. This is a hazard mitigation grant for individual safe rooms in the amount of $38,653 with $24,897 being federal funds. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I forgot to ask upstairs. I know this is going to be federal dollars and Lisa's not here. Mayor, are you familiar with where the rest of the money's coming from?
No.
Okay. I forgot. We got somebody from EMA here. Maybe he can answer that. I forgot to ask upstairs. I apologize. Because I know we got some more grat money coming.
Yes, sir. The rest of the money comes from the homeowner.
The homeowner?
Yes, no money from the city of Gadsden will be spent on this.
Okay. All right. That answers that. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? Is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have one today, please. Legal document, 2011-450. It's a document resolution authorizing change order number one from the Gunbilloner House on the reroute from project, additional work, and overruns in an amount of $2,233 to Clark Restoration and Custom Roofing Incorporated. I'd ask for unanimous consent, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I ask for passes, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two items. I have a resolution document number 2011, amend fiscal year budget to appropriate funds for the purchase of furniture for the police department. I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The other item I have, sir, is a legal document number 2011-453. It's a resolution authorizing agreement with the Lodge at Greenbrier regarding Wisteria Lane for some construction work to be done there. I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is an agreement between the city and, and a construction company, a contractor to allow the city to do work that was done, to correct some damages that were done on Holly Avenue in Tittenmore Bend. But the city will do the work but be reimbursed, be paid by the contractor in an amount of $40,885.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have quite a few. I guess I'll start with Resolution R. 254-11. I'm asking for unanimous consent to repeal this resolution.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is a case where we had previously voted to abate this, this premises, and we have a couple that are buying the house from the owner and they're going to restore it. So that's the reason for the repeal.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, my next one is a, ask for unanimous consent to consider Resolution 3175. That's the bid, I'm sorry. 451 is the one. This is from Engineering Department. It's awarding bid 3175 to Botner Construction Company, Inc. for the construction of a new training tower for the Gadsden Fire Department in the amount of $237,824. unanimous consent.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay, I move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is a new facility that's going to enhance our training in the fire department quite a bit of the whole facility that we're moving out of.
It's going to be down at the airport?
It's going to be behind the new fire hall at the airport.
Got choked on the water. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, my next one is from the Legal Department, 445. Ask for unanimous consent to consider authorizing transfer of surplus equipment to Hamilton Fire Department and Ziff City Volunteer Fire Department.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, and my last two are from EMA. It's a resolution that we'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider. It's 447. I can do them both, Cannon. Let me do 446 and 447.
Second.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider both resolutions today, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
You're not even going to tell us what they are?
Yeah, I understand. I got to get you all committed to the second before I let you know what it is.
We've gone over this upstairs, so we all know what we're talking about.
These are both for the in-house storm shelters in home and the amount that they would pay from FEMA is what it's for. In-house residential. Anyway, ask for adoption.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both resolutions.
Is there any other new business? Department reports, committees?
There is one about the furniture. See anybody bring that up?
We didn't did that.
He did that. He was making sure the chief had a chair.
We got the chief a new chair. That's covered.
Well, any department reports, committees, boards. Due to the Christmas holiday, Monday's garbage will be collected on Tuesday. Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday. Thursday and Friday will be as regular schedule. Remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor, you want to start?
I'd just like to tell everybody, I hope the PC police, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Be safe and have a good time. We've had some big crowds at the Falls. The price is real cheap. I think it's $5 for an adult and kids under three admitted free. And I believe we had like 9,000 this past weekend. It's really a, it's really a big deal if you want to go ride the train and do all that and see all the lights. Get there early and maybe it won't rain this out this weekend, but we're really having some big crowds. I went to a place south of Birmingham two years ago for the Polar Express. They had three train cars, we got on, it was $25 a person. They had about 10 lights on both sides of the track, went down to the track about a quarter of a mile. Cup of hot chocolate, two cookies and picture with Santa Claus. $25 per person. So what we have here is really, really worth the money, I assure you. Even the people from Chattanooga were saying it looked better than Ruby Falls up there, you know, where they had the lights up there every year. It looks even better. So I hope everybody has a good time during the holidays.
Billy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to reiterate, we just talked about authorizing agreement with the State of Alabama Emergency Management for hazardous mitigation. I encourage all of our citizens to be in touch with the EMA who are interested in safe places, safe houses, because there's money available for you to new construction and existing houses as well as self-contained safe places for your properties. So if you are interested, please be in touch with the Emergency Management Agency. Also, we are not, we're not leaving off the table the fact that we need to establish safe places within the city, throughout the city for residents that don't have safe places. And the challenge is to the EMA to continue to work on that, to come up with whatever funds we can to make large capacity safe places for people who need to be out of their residence during tornadic weather. And I'd like to also wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, a very safe and Merry Christmas, and be sure and keep Christ in Christmas. Thank you.
Robert?
I want to take this opportunity to thank the Yer Brown Kindergarten. I mean, they were beautiful and a great little group and I got my first gift for the holiday season. Maybe I've been good after all. I was getting counted word there. I would like to wish everybody a happy holidays. And, you know, I saw something on TV this morning that really disturbed me and, and, you know, it was a guy who had been drinking. And so he decided not to get behind the wheels to drive. But what he did was he got his kid to drive over. I mean, come on now, that's, that's, that's just crazy. Ladies and gentlemen, let's think about what we're doing and let's be safe this holiday season. You know, I know we don't furnish rides during the Christmas holidays for people who've had a little bit too much, but find a designated driver who's old enough and who's big enough to get behind the steering wheel and let them drive. I appreciate the guy thinking about the fact that he was too drunk to drive, but he, I think he just chose the wrong designated driver. So let's, let's be safe this holiday season so we can see you guys after Christmas.
I don't know what you're complaining about. He got her a booster seat.
Well, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry.
That was his defense in court.
That was his defense. He had a booster seat. I'm sorry. You're right.
Thought that was sharp.
Yeah.
I just, my reason for wanting to table our redistricting plan is we're, I think we're very close to coming up one that is fair to everybody and all of us are on board with. So, and it's very important we get this right.
That's not true.
Before we do, well, we may have one person that's not real happy, but I think the rest of us are. Anyway, that's the reason to postpone that a couple of weeks and let's make sure we get it right when we do it. Other than that, Merry Christmas to everyone.
I do want to thank everyone that brought their children out to the gazebo in Alabama City. The past couple of weekends, I think we had between 275 and 300 kids that came out and they really enjoyed it and they had a bunch of hot chocolate and they got set in salmon's lap and get your picture made with them, you know, and they were just thrilled to death. And I really appreciate that. And this was the third year Dwight Lodge has put that on. It's co-sponsored by the city of Gadsden. Really appreciate those guys from Lodge that came out and did that. They do it every year and they're waiting, can't wait till next year to do it, they say. Tell me the Saturday night. And also, I was at a Christmas function last night with the Lions Club and our Gadsden CD choir sung. And they did a fabulous job. I mean, those people, there was like 10 or 12 of them. Last night was the last night they said they was going to sing for this year. And I just want to tell them I really do appreciate all they do for our city. And from my house to yours, wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year's.
They were almost as good as a kindergarten, huh?
Yes, hey, let me, let me talk about the kindergarten a little bit. Those, those little kids came in from the kindergarten day, they did a wonderful job. I mean, I sent a bunch of grandmothers, granddads and they were proud. Hey, I was, I was just as proud as they was, I guarantee you. Those two little guys I know, Colton and Brody Cunias, I sent their grandmother and their great-grandmothers here and their grandfather here and just a bunch of people came with them. And that just shows you right there that these people are taking time to take off work and be with their kids and go with them and just teach them what everything's all about.
Well, they're very fortunate, Yer Brown, that the parents really support them. When they have a PTA meeting, you can't get in the lunchroom. Ben?
Yeah, I was just sitting here thinking, I went to a lot of Christmas parties this year, but two stand out in my mind. Snell Grove was one of them. Hope is the other one. Those kids, a lot of them can't help themselves, but I've never seen such dedication between the caregivers and amongst themselves. It's unbelievable. If you ever saw them as a group or individual, individually, how they, how they get by. It's just, it's heartwarming to me to even be a part of it. I want to remember Wilbur, Wilbur and Hunka Pillar this morning, he's a member of my district and of the Fine Dining Jack's Coffee Club, Bill. He'll be happy. He'll be having five bypass surgery in the morning, and I want to just let everybody know that we're praying for him and appreciate anybody else's prayers. I know he's gonna be okay. He's got a good doctor, he's in a good hospital, and everything will be fine. Otherwise, just everybody have a very, very Merry Christmas and be safe. Be safe. Watch yourselves. That's all I have.
Mr. President, I'd also like to say, during the holidays, we, I have attended two luncheons that I would like to just point out. The one at Family Success Center in East Gaston, and it was good to see the people who volunteer over there at that organization. When you go over, you know, you'll know some of the people who volunteer, and it's just good to see the atmosphere that they have there, the spirit of camaraderie, and the working together there is just a beautiful thing. And they, and of course, they had some beautiful food, and the women were just wonderful there. And thanks to the males inability to attend the luncheon last week, Johnny and I were able to go to the Greater Gaston Housing Authority luncheon, and I tell you, that organization has a wonderful group of people working for them. Greater Gaston Housing Authority, what we used to refer to as the projects, you know, the product, those units have come a long way from when I was a kid, you know, and, and they've got a Wayne East, and that crew is doing a wonderful job. Plus, we had some good food, too. But they had a, they, they, be sure, every time you have a, get a chance, you know, thank those employees, and don't forget this theme program that they have in the Greater Housing Authority to help those kids. That's a wonderful program, so if any time you have an opportunity to support that program.
Billy, I'm glad you brought that up about Wayne East. He used to come around more, but he has done more over there than anybody else ever done.
Yes.
I remember when he used to shoot dice on the sidewalk and do a few more things. You know, Wayne hit that place?
Oh, not Wayne, nah. You didn't say Wayne. Well, you sound like you said, I remember when he used to shoot dice?
No, no. I swear it wasn't Wayne. Well, you know, I used to wanna stop, and, you know, as I was driving down Sixth Street, I, actually in my old days, I would've stopped, but Wayne definitely wasn't in there.
Billy, that was probably some of the best food I've had all year right there.
It was.
Friday, it was a, like I said, I got mine noticed about 10 minutes before you got yours early, and I got mine late from the mayor.
Yeah.
But that was well worth it, and I do appreciate you letting me go in your place, Mayor.
I, I knew y'all love that, so y'all owe me, though.
And of course, Parks and Recreation has had a wonderful turnout with their, with their event over at the park. It was a good event there, and the city employees, this, it's just been, it has been beautiful, a beautiful season, and we all are thankful for everything that's done.
I've gained about five pounds just listening to all that.
I wish everybody a happy holidays, safe holidays. This, I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
So moved.